All right, it's four o'clock. I'd like to call our Board of Education work session for November 12th, 2024 to order. And we do have a quorum. I would like to ask that we now have a moment of silence. Ms. LaBreck, would you mind leading us in our pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is the G.C. Hawley deed and the lease agreement. Dr. Winborn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to defer to our visiting board attorney today to just provide a very brief overview on the purpose of this document and where this sits in sort of the timeline of the transition of the former G.C. Hawley Middle School property, what may also be known as the NX or older campus. So if you don't mind, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon, board members. My name is Jason Weber. I'm filling in for Eva Dubison tonight. I do have a little bit of background on this item. It's my understanding that you've been working with the county on a transfer of the former Hawley School property, and there are a couple of steps in executing that transfer. So the first one that the county has asked for the school board to consider is what's in your agenda materials today. It's a facility use license agreement. This is an agreement that would allow you to continue to use the property for your athletics and other purposes during the period of time after it transfers ownership. Our office has reviewed the document. One of our attorneys, Sharon Lynn, she's a former real estate lawyer, so she's worked with the county. We feel that it's in good shape, and it's being presented for your approval tonight. And again, this allows you continued use and continued access. The next step in the process would be to actually convey the property to the county, so that is not before you tonight. There's not a deed or a sale agreement to be approved tonight. My understanding is the county attorney is working on that. So that second step will come to you at a subsequent meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Does anyone have any questions about the lease agreement? Is this something we need to vote on tonight, approving it?
Yes, ma'am. It's my understanding this is presented for your approval.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the facility use license agreement as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Call in favor. The motion passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is school reorganization. Our superintendent and staff are going to talk with us about the transition plan and present some information for us and see if we have any input and questions. So I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Winborn at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, board members and team members and those who may be tuning in online. Before I get into this, I just wanted to take a moment and recognize and show my appreciation to the students at Granville Central High School today who shared their opinions and their perspectives on the closure of their school. We had some students that walked out peacefully and respectfully, gathered outside the front of the school, and we gave them a little time. And then we did eventually ask them to get back to class in a safe and orderly manner, and many, many of them did. And I had a chance to speak to the students and also answer some of their questions. Mr. Perry was with me, and Dr. Allen and her team did a great job of just keeping everything orderly and safe. But I do acknowledge the feelings that they're experiencing, and I know it's very difficult for them. And I just, my hope is that they can continue to focus on having productive school days and finish this semester strong and have faith that we will take good care of them and the work that we're doing here will be trying to keep their best interests at heart and make sure that we have a smooth transition for them. So that's kind of what the reason why we're here today is to make sure that, you know, there's a lot of moving parts now that the difficult decision has been made, to make sure that everything operates smoothly and that everyone is supported, that there are no surprises, that there are no big mistakes, that we're planning and being very proactive and thoughtful about how this is going to happen. Ms. Curran is not here tonight. She's under the weather, but so we've got some other staff. Dr. Hamm is here. Ms. Hunt is here. And what I was hoping is that this, we could have sort of an informal discussion. I can share some information with me. You guys give me your feedback. Try to poke holes in our, what we've got here, see if there's things that maybe we might have not have thought about, or if it's something you would like for us to pay close attention to. But, you know, I certainly feel like this, now that you've made the decision, this work is tasked to us to execute. So, but I want your blessing, and I want you to hold us to account with it as well. So we've divided it kind of into three categories, student reassignment and transfers, and that includes the choice or open enrollment window in the spring. Before we even think about where staff are going to be assigned, we have to figure out where all the students are going to go first. So student assignment is our number one priority. Then the staff reassignments will follow. And then, of course, we've also got to consider what's going on with the transition of just the facilities themselves. You know, there's a lot of stuff's going to have to be moved, some work's got to be done. So we'll go through that. Since Board Docs was made live on Thursday, we have continued to work on the document that's titled Student Reassignment Timeline. And I have posted a revised version of that document. So Mr. Connor, I left the old one up there just so folks could see it, but if you'll scroll down, you'll see one that says Student Reassignment Timeline Revised. And there's a hard copy at each of your tables as well, board members. So I'll kind of walk you through this document, and Mr. Perry has been working closely with me on this. This table, this chart, if you kind of, actually, if you go to page two, we were sort of backwards on this. We backward mapped it from the registration window that our high school students, you know, undertake in the spring to sign up for their classes for the following year. And we're honoring that same window of March, which is typical for what happens in years past, to let our students sign up for their courses. And again, we're talking about high school right here. We're not talking about middle school. We're talking about high school. But that, we're going to have a window that's open about four weeks, and it'll be the four weeks leading up to spring break. Is that correct, Mr. Perry?
That's correct.
All right. Keep me straight here. So it'll be the beginning of March, 3/3/25, all the way through the 28th of March. That's the last day before spring break. And so what happens during this time is our counselors and our teachers and all of the educators in our high schools will be working with students in Infinite Campus, registering students for the very first time in that platform. Ms. Buffalo's done some research on what that's going to look like, but essentially, students can register electronically. We'll have some paperwork that'll help sort of guide them with their choices, and we have our curriculum bulletin, which lists all the classes that will be offered. But most, for the most part, what I understand is the students will log into Infinite Campus and sign up for what they want, and then they'll sign up for some alternatives, which is typical. So in order to get ready for that registration window, we have to know, if you look back at the first page, we have to know where all the students are going to be assigned. We need to know 100% what school everyone's going to attend before that starts. Now, Dr. Hamm, he has been working with a consultant at ITRA, and it is our goal that by the beginning of December, we will be able to notify, you see that December date, December 6, 2024, all families notified of their 25, 26 school assignments based on the revised attendance zones, grade six through 12, on or before that date. So by then, everyone will have been informed. And we're going to be doing that via email, a letter, and by U.S. Postal Service. So parents, families will get an electronic notification on their email address that's in Infinite Campus, and they're going to get a hard copy mailed to their home. And we're going to give a hard copy to every student as well.
Are going to include the rising six grades, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Grade six, should say rising, thank you, rising six, 12, rising grades, six, 12. Thank you. Now, again, that's just based on the new attendance signs that you approved last week. So basically, Chris and his expert, they will sit down and they will promote everybody in the system up to the next grade level and then give us a giant spreadsheet, and then we'll use that to create these letters that will go out through these various methods. Now, I anticipate they will know before Thanksgiving. I really do. We should be able to go operate on this quickly, but I don't want to overpromise anything in case we run into any glitches. So I think that it's reasonable for us to be able to accomplish this by the 6th of December. So that by, you know, if you think about it this way, before winter break, everybody knows where they're going to be assigned next year. And at the same time, we can then start communicating what the process will be for transfers, because not everyone may want to go to the school that they're assigned to. They may want to exercise their choice. Yes, sir?
How much will the course offerings change between what they are now and what they're going to be for high school especially?
They will change pretty significantly, because we will have many more teachers assigned to the two high schools, so especially when it comes to electives.
Well, and well, my question gets to how the children want to know before they decide what choice, what school they want to go to, do what's in the choice program, because a lot of what they can take is going to hinge on whether they want the choice standard.
Right. Well, unfortunately, we're kind of in a chicken and egg scenario there, because we can't assign teach, the teachers follow the enrollment of the students. So we need to establish where all the students will be enrolled before we can be certain which, how many teachers will be assigned to a school. But I will say this, you know, if you look at the high school option one that you approved, it's relatively balanced. And I'm going to get to this in just a minute, but South Granville High School will not have a lot of excess capacity. So it's doubtful that we will be able to allow all that many new students into South Granville for the choice program.
One of the things that I noticed when we were going through the courses before, they weren't exactly the same in both schools.
That's right.
So that has to be, make some decisions about students and where they want to go. That's all I was trying, I was getting at.
I do understand.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
For courses like band, chorus, you would anticipate that that's going to be at both schools?
Correct.
The CTE, how is that going to work?
Well, Ms. Perry, you may want to jump in a little bit here, but I anticipate that we will have course offerings in every program area. It's just the total number of courses. Will we have two agriculture teachers or three agriculture teachers at each school? Will we have two or will we have three business teachers?
So someone in a track that they're in that agricultural program, they would not lose by any stretch of the imagination?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
The only-
Health science will be the only one that would be, because that's specifically at South Granville and not at Webb.
Yep. With the Certified Nurses Assist-
Certified Nursing Assistant Program.
But at Webb, we offer Project Lead the Way biomedical sciences. So it's health sciences, but a little bit different track. We have auto mechanics at both schools. We have masonry at Webb, but we don't have a trade at South Granville right now. We do have ROTC at both schools.
Okay. Well, that one on the nursing thing, if that child that's wanting to go into that particular program ends up in the Webb district, what's going to happen with that?
Well, currently, we don't offer that course at Granville Central. So it's not something they've already taken and then would miss out on. They just may not necessarily, there may not be the capacity to allow them to transfer So these are great questions. So again, before Christmas, all the families would know where their child or children are assigned, and then we would start sending out directions about the open enrollment or choice window. And that would open as soon as we get back from winter break. So that 7th is the first school day, I believe. Is that right, Mr. Perry? Double check me on that. January 7th?
Yes, that's the first day back from break.
First school day.
First student day.
Okay. I believe we have like two workdays before that or something, maybe, or. And then we would keep it open for a full four weeks, and it would be a media blitz, because one thing that's frustrating for us to hear is sometimes families, we hear later on in the spring, I didn't know there was a transfer window, or I didn't know that I could apply. And, you know, so we're going to, we're going to really push extra, extra hard, making sure that, this saturates all the way through, every family that they know this choice window will be open. And this will also include, at that same time, applications for Granville Early College and Granville Academy. It's all going to coincide the exact same schedule, because typically in the past, for some reason, that wasn't completely synced up. So we're going to make sure all that is together this year. So then, once it closes on the 4th of February, we would then have about three weeks to sort out, you know, figure out where the dust settles and then notify those families yes or no, or where they've been chosen to attend or selected. Any questions about the timeline? So again, we've gamed this out several times. We had a lot of people eyeball this, from our data manager side to Ms. Hunt in the transfer side, to the academic side, registration, Ms. So you'll see on the second page, we've identified sort of like who the key contacts and personnel are with this. So school assignment questions will be directed through the data manager at each school, and then Ms. Buffalo will help manage and oversee that if additional information is needed. Transfer or choice program will begin with the data manager, and Ms. Hunt will oversee that process as she had, as she has in the past. Registration and course selection will work through primarily the school counselors and school administrators, and then Ms. Salisbury is leading that work. And then for any transportation questions or concerns, those start to come up later on in the year and in the summer, that'll be the assistant principal and, of course, Dr. Now, if you'll note, I did skip over this. There's a bullet by itself on page two at the bottom of the chart at the top. This is inclement weather dependent, because we were like, oh, my goodness, what if we actually have a big snow or something this year, you know, where we miss half a week or a week? You know, we're going to have to kind of roll punches on that. But it could, it could, you know, impact this, so we'll just have to be mindful. Because, you know, losing a week or even a half a week in any of these windows does matter. All right. And I'm sorry I didn't number these pages, but if you go to page three, this next section is really about choice and transfers. So first of all, with regard to the middle schools, we have no capacity issues, really. We could, quite a few students could transfer or request to transfer either from the new southern district to the northern district or vice versa, and we would not have a problem with finding them room. We'll have a lot of excess capacity. So we will just sort of operate the open enrollment process as normal. But regarding, the trick comes with the high schools. So if you think about it, again, I don't have an exact number, but the projection is, with the attendance zone that you chose, we would have around 850 plus or minus students at each of the new high schools, each of the remaining high schools, I should say. We estimate that South Granville has, you know, a comfortable capacity of around 950. That could, if that gets a little bit higher, if it approaches 1,000, we start talking about maybe having teachers having to move around a little bit on carts or sharing some spaces, which we don't really want right away. So we don't have a lot of room for students to transfer to South Granville from Webb's attendance zone. So, and we need to leave some space for students that actually move in to that attendance zone for the first time, you know, that just, family moves to this area, you know, or they move from one part of our county to another, a legitimate move. Those, obviously, if they're going to be living in that attendance zone, will go to that school. So just for argument's sake, let's say we have room for 100 students at South Granville. Maybe just, and I don't know if that's the number or not. We're going to, we will know more as this date gets sooner. But let's say we have a spot for 100 students to transfer. What's the smart percentage of 100 to leave open for students who may move into that area? We need to leave at least 25? We need to leave 10? And then what, the balance of that would be reserved for choice? And then we started thinking about, okay, should everybody just sort of have the same kind of pick in a lottery? Or should we wait, wait the lottery? For example, we believe, I believe, that children of our employees should have an automatic spot. That is something that the board has done for quite a while, and it's one of the few perks that our employees have is, you know, school choice. And we haven't run the numbers, but there are not a lot of them, right? There's, we're not talking, we're talking about a handful. So it's not a big number. So not only is it an important privilege, but it's also, it's not a lot of kids. So it's not, not going to really change the numbers too much. If you go down this chart, we started thinking about who should have sort of priority. Well, what about the children, for example, that are already at South Granville, that don't live in that attendance zone, but they've been choice students ever since they were in elementary school? And every year, they've reapplied and they've been approved to stay. And this is their fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth year in the southern area feeder, feeder pattern, and they just want to finish at South Granville. They've been there. So, and again, these points are just, this is just a draft, so we, on a scale of 10 points, maybe they should get 10. All right? Then you look down at the next one. What about those students who are at South Granville that have only been there since high school? Right? They transferred to South Granville when they were in ninth grade. So next year, they're going to be in 10th grade or 11th grade or 12th grade. They're already there. You know, they've, they made that choice. Their parents were hoping that they're established there, they're wanting to finish there. Maybe we give them eight points. And you go down the list, and the next one, what about the seniors that are at, the rising seniors that are at Granville Central? They should probably, since it's their senior year, they should be weighted more than their classmates. So maybe they get six points. And then the rising 10th and 11th graders would get three. And then everybody else who wants to transfer would get one. So when we open the window, we publicize all of this, and we say, okay, here's how we're going to be weighting this criteria. You sign up asking to transfer, and we identify them based on this criteria, and then we use a weighted lottery method, which we've researched and figured out that we can do internally using spreadsheets, and we can get somebody to validate it and check it just to make sure we've done it right, a third party if we need to. But then that would sort of give us a list, a ranked list of all of the students, and we could then match that up against the number of available seats. So going back to that example I gave of, say, we have 100 spots available, and we have 300 kids who've applied to transfer, we run it through this weighted lottery, and it will rank them out. And then we know the available spots go to, if there are 75 spots, they go to the top 75 kids on the, on the weighted ranking. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
Is there any way that we could, or maybe we already did this? I don't, I don't know, but for school choice, do we, do we ever base those decisions on academic performance?
Ms. Hunt, can I put you on the spot to answer some school choice questions? So the question was, do we consider academic history when we are making selections for choice programs? And I want to say generally, the answer to that is not really. And now, again, we're not talking about early college or Granville Academy, because that's an application. But we do make attendance and discipline a consideration.
Well, and I'm, I'm just asking, because we, we are being put in this position where we, we do have to consider this, and if, and I'm not saying like based on GPA per se. I'm just saying like, you know, if there's a difference between students that clearly aren't putting forth much effort, you know, they're failing multiple classes, and yet they still want school of choice, well, school choice is a, it's a privilege, not a right. We do that where we can, when we can. Um, you know, and like if you're, if you're not, I don't know, putting, putting academics as a priority, like I feel like maybe, does it really matter what school you're going to? I don't know, I'm asking what. And I, and I also want to deter, there seems to be, just listening to like community members and people in the public, there seems to be the perception that some of our students use school of choice as a means to, you know, get on a certain athletic team or whatever. And I feel like if we made academics part of the process, that we could send a clear message, that's, that's what needs to come first. So I don't know. I'm, I'm open to suggestions, but it's just a thought. Again, not, not based necessarily on like how high your GPA is, but just the fact that like maybe you have to be, you have to be passing all of your classes in order to be considered or something.
Excuse me. This weighted score system that you have here is a, is a pretty clean way of making decisions. But the more you add to it and the more complicated you make it, it's the harder it's going to be to come to a decision. When you look at, say, if you look at the ones with 10 points and you have 10, and if you consider other things, you might have three of none. But I just, you know, being a bottom line kind of person that I am, I think the closer you can stick to it, the better off we're going to be.
I think the more objective it is, the better. I understand where you're coming from on that. But when we start to say effort, then we sort- But, when we start to say effort, then we sort, that's pretty subjective.
Well, again, not, not, like I said, it wouldn't be based on GPA. It's just a matter of, if you're not pass, at least passing all of your classes, it would automatically disqualify you from, from school of choice for, I mean, for these purposes.
Yeah, I, I think about three of our, I mean, three of our main priorities across the district have been academics, attendance, and student behavior. So, if we said, for academics, if you're passing all your classes, you'd get a plus one. If you were not on an attendance contract, plus one. And if you didn't get any long-term, or out-of-school suspensions, any OSS, plus one. Or, you could make it negative, if you did, or whatever. Or you could disqualify also. But you, like, we could measure each of these three categories pretty easily, I think. It's either a yes or a no.
Well, we, we either say that we're offering the same academic opportunity at all of our schools, and, and say that all of our students have the opportunity to put forth whatever effort that they have, and, and pass their classes, or we don't. I mean, if they're currently passing their classes, then they could have the privilege of requesting a transfer, or, you know, or school of choice. And if they're not, why would we reward that?
Ms. Hunt, and I don't mean to cut you off, remind us, what happens, what, what does the applica, the choice or transfer request document say about requirements?
It talks about the three requirements that you just stated. The attendance, behavior, and, um, attendance, behavior, who was that one?
Academic progress.
Yes. So, it does talk about that. And then, at the end of each year, the principals can make the decision to not have a student to return to their school based on those three different areas. If the students have not demonstrated in those areas, they can deny them, and they have to go back to their base school.
So, that's current?
Mm-hmm.
I think we put that into effect last year.
Last year.
And I can weigh in a little bit, too, without having the historical background here. I mean, to a certain extent, student transfer requests and reassignment requests are also governed by your board policies and state statute. So, you know, the student's request is denied, and there are certain processes for requesting appeals, including to the board, and there are some statutory factors that are also reflected in your policy, where, you know, when those decisions or those appeals do come to you as board members. Some of those factors include the best interest of the child, the orderly and efficient administration of public schools, the proper administration of the school to which assignment is requested, and the instruction, health, and safety of the pupils there enrolled. So, I think that's where some of those, you know, factors that are specific to each student, you never know what the academics are, what the discipline history is, those are all things that could come into account when it does come to you at that point.
But if we set the policy, then we have the ultimate say in how those decisions are made?
Yes.
I mean, as long as within the confines of the law.
Within the confines of your policy.
And could you repeat the number, the second one that you said?
Sure. So, those factors are best interest of the child, the orderly and efficient administration of the public schools, the proper administration of the school to which assignment is requested, and the last is the instruction, health, and safety of the pupils there enrolled.
Dr. Williams, I want to add also that we said, it made me remember that sometime years ago, kids have asked me, transfer to avoid violence or confidence, if they have some guys, they're all girls, they'll make, cause problems in the environment, they won't be transferred to another school. I think we can also do that for the safe all the kids there. So, I guess, hope that still stands in place when we...
Thank you for that, Dr. Lindsey, and that's a very important point. From time to time, I do get a, a family during the school year that will reach out, it's usually a very unique situation, and if they are concerned about the safety of their child, or if they're experiencing, like, excessive bulliness, or being targeted, we, we talk about those, and we have transferred students before. But those are on, like, a case-by-case basis, and that's separate from choice. But we, thank you for saying that, because we absolutely do consider that. And sometimes, we'll get one just in the middle of the year, that's a hardship request, too. Dr. Hamm, see you, had something to contribute. Thank you.
Just a general reminder, as we're thinking about transfers, that we do not provide transportation outside of attendance areas. So, I just wanted to make sure I put that back out there again today.
Thank you. That's a good reminder. Thank you, sir.
No shadows?
So, board members, would you like for us, first of all, do you like the idea of a weighted sort of scale?
Yes.
I think that makes it objective, yeah.
I agree.
Would you like for us to find a way to fairly kind of weave into this, something about attendance and discipline and behavior, or do you want us to just leave that out?
I think that if we get back into making other changes, or leave it out, or whatever the case might be, we're starting from a point that we might end up having to go back and have another open sec, you know what I'm saying? If you change something, then we should, or we will have to have the opportunity of having the parents to come. You see what I'm saying? So...
But this is not currently how we do it. That you, you just came up with...
This is proposed, for this special, for this special occasion.
So, now is, so now is the time for changes.
Yeah.
Now is the time, right. So, this is not, this is not the current method that we use.
It's not. So, we're looking at it, and then considering other things possibly as well.
Yeah. And I would propose, this is for this cycle only, because of we're in consolidation.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I, let me clarify. Okay, there's a rising 10th grader. That 10th grader that's at South Granville, that's there by choice now, am I correct? They would get eight points.
Yes, ma'am.
But any transfer from GCH, Granville Central, a rising 12th grader, would get six points.
Here's another, here's another option. And this is something you all have done before. When, the last time we consolidated, we closed two schools to transfers because of capacity concerns. Butler St. Elementary School and Mount Energy School were closed, correct, Ms. Hunt?
Yes.
We allowed the, the students who were already choice, some of them, remember, you, you went through this situation where you allowed some of the grade levels to stay, but you closed to new choice, except for siblings. Because you wanted to leave a certain amount of space open in case people moved in. So, we, we could also just say, South Granville's gonna be closed. Because it's, it is, it is, Webb, JF Webb has much more excess capacity. That's why I'm not really using that as an example. If there are 850 students at Webb, they could handle 300 more easily. South Granville could only handle another 100 or so more.
But I feel like it, it warrants consideration, because we aren't automatically going to take that away from our employees. So, I feel like if we're gonna operate, if, if that's what we're still gonna uphold for our employees, then we need to be willing to take that into consideration, and try our best to do the same for members of the public.
So, South Granville currently has 66 kids that go there by choice. Is that what I'm looking at?
Yes. So, thank you, Ms. Williams. That next page, these are the current numbers, choice numbers. Now, but they're, they're already there, right?
Right. And some of those...
Will graduate.
And, some of those may also be absorbed into the actual attendance zone, because some of those are probably currently Granville Central students.
That's correct.
That, and so, we are absorbing part of the Granville Central attendance zone into South Granville. And so, they may not be considered...
Yes.
...choice students going into next year.
That's correct.
The thing that I just wanted to, before we go too far down the, down the road here, is, in the, in the weighted score, I just wanted to make sure that this is clear. You could have somebody who gets 10 points, but this is still a lottery from the 10 points down. So, even though your kid may have 10 points, they could still draw the short straw and not get put into their choice school, because they, their number still wasn't drawn, even though they have 10 chances.
Yes. But it's very unlikely.
Okay.
Because it, you know, it's still statistically trying to generate, top weights will get, have more chance of being picked.
More probability. Right. But I just...
But you're right.
Yeah.
You're right. Doesn't guarantee you anything.
Right.
Good point. It's a lottery.
That's what the charter does, so to speak.
Or, you don't make it a lottery, you make it a rank pick.
So, the kids that have the most points would automatically get priority.
The top spots.
Which I, which I kind of...
But then what if you have, what if there are only 50 spots, and you have 55 kids with the same rank?
Then you would, then it would be random lottery.
Do you anticipate any issues with UC kids?
Mr. Perry, I know we've talked with Dr. Codeman about this, um, we know there're gonna have to be some special...
Yes, for our self-contained students, we, we will have to make some adjustments there to make sure that those classrooms are equipped to handle those students. So, making sure that we assign classrooms that are, that will be able to meet the needs, meet their needs, with accessibility.
I've not heard Dr. Codeman raise any significant concerns, though, about it.
Guess that can be handled through IEP to a point.
Sorry, the last question that I have is that, um, does the long-term tran, like, the 10 points for the long-term transfer in feeder schools, is that kind of like rolling in the sibling concept? Like, if you have, you know, like, a 10th grader, and then some other kid that, you know, another sibling that's coming in to 9th grade?
It's true, we didn't address siblings in this, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Nowhere in here is siblings included.
But if, but if they would be a rising 9th grader, and they've been at the feeder school, then, then they would get the 10.
But that's what I'm asking, though, is that, is that kind of like, an umbrella for that sort of situation, or is that not guaranteed? You see what I'm saying? I understand what you're saying feeder school, but I'm saying, like, if you have somebody who was, you know, at Northern Granville Middle, Middle School, went to South Granville High School, like, the following year, and then they've got a sibling that's obviously not in the feeder school, but their sibling is going to South Granville, you know, like, the odds of that happening are small. But, I'm just saying, it could happen.
No, I think, I think maybe we could specify long-term transfer in feeder school, including siblings, that are within that same pattern.
Okay.
So, that would include it in that category.
They would be in the lottery, but not necessarily getting...
Weighted, though.
Yeah, but, okay. So, that means you'd probably need another weighting system next year.
Or, I think what they're saying, Ms. Williams, is that they could be in that 10-point category, I will just reiterate that, right now, we still don't, and again, I keep going back to South Granville, but that's the school with the more limited room. I don't know how many spots we will have. This might not be a problem. There might be 100 people that want to go there, and we have 100 spots. Because as you pointed out, Ms. Hayes, you know, when you combine these attendance zones, some of the ones that were previously choice aren't gonna be choice anymore. All those 12th graders are gonna graduate.
And I was also thinking that with the majority of the Granville Central students being redistricted to JF Webb, then some of the ones that are districted to South Granville may want to stay with their peers to graduate, and then choose to go to JF Webb. I could see that happening as well. You know, and juniors and seniors, you know?
Absolutely.
If the majority of the kids are at Webb, that might be where we get the majority of choice students moving to. I don't, I don't know.
So, I'm sensing, and tell me if I'm wrong, that there's a consensus, or you guys are good with this concept?
I would really like the board to consider not allowing kids that are failing classes to get school choice. Because, like, the, the issue that you brought up, and you were saying that, um, that would, say we have a kid that, that is there currently, they're a rising 10th, 11th, or 12th grader, that, that means that irregardless, they could be failing all four classes, and they're still gonna get eight points. That is still ahead of a Granville Central student that could be a rising 12th grader, who is at the top of their class, and wants to do a program at South Granville. They would have less points than a kid that's already there, that is failing everything. I mean, why would we, why would we give them that, that opportunity?
Do we make it for the year, or for the semester?
We won't, yeah. We will only know the, by the time they're applying, we will only have the fall, this, this semester to consider.
It's gonna be based on the fall semester.
Well, Ms. Hayes, I would ask another, well, what about the student that was long-term suspended?
Yeah.
Oh, doesn't that fall under the discipline category? Did, I thought...
Well, with, it's never, actually prevented them from applying, it just prevents them from continuing involvement at the choice school. The principal sends them back to their base school if they get suspended while they're...
Yeah, absolutely not. Like I said, this is a, this is not something that we, that we have to offer kids, this is...
No, I, I would agree.
I say, if you've been long-term suspended, long-term suspended, or if you're failing any classes, that you should not be allowed to take, to have this in consideration for this upcoming year. That's not to say that they can't improve and do it in the years following, right? But I mean, if those are the things that we're focused on as a board and as a school system, then I think that we need to send that as a clear message.
If I'm hearing this correctly here, we, you were saying that if they're not doing well, they shouldn't be allowed to transfer. There could be ve, many reasons why a kid's not doing well at school. And I think that if we need, if we can have that way, he needs to come before a, a academic board, or it's gonna, it could be health reasons, family reasons, many things can cause kids not doing well at school. Something, sometimes just changing the environment to help a kid do, do better. And since all our schools accept kids from all else, are academics, you know, I think they put a precedent on kids to be passing everything as things going, I think it's too, too far.
But Dr. Wimbourn just addressed that, and said that he takes those special circumstances into consideration. I mean, that's the question that you just asked before.
Right, right.
Like, that that isn't actually part of this process, that's a totally separate consideration that he does for students already.
Right.
So, I mean, that's, that's completely separate from this.
So, you're not, so, 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 help me again, again, what were you saying? I may have misunderstood you.
Barring special circumstances, like the considerations that Dr. Wimbourn brought up before, if you are failing a class, or have been long-term suspended, that for the upcoming year, you do not get to participate in school choice. Because it is not a right. It is not something that we have to offer anybody. And if they want to improve, then they put forth the effort, and then they are, and then the following year, they, they can.
I, I tend to agree, Ms. Hayes. And I, I'll say, just as a reminder, the last time when we closed Creedmoor, we were concerned about Butler Elementary being overcrowded, and Mount Energy being overcrowded, and we just simply didn't allow anyone to transfer, new, new transfers to those two schools. And there were a lot of students that, families that wanted to transfer to Mount Energy, and were very upset about it, but there, we said there just wasn't enough space. So, y'all held the line on that. So, we could do the same here, I don't, I mean, I just, I kinda, I'm trying to find a little bit of a happy medium, because I know that those students who are deserving and really want to go to, for example, if they wanted to go to South Granville, there would be an opportunity for some of them.
Put them on the waiting list, and they have not, they have been on the waiting list, not be, get first priority, and they have space for them. As you sign up, that's where you get a chance to go there.
Okay. So, any of those criteria, if they were failing, or they had a academic contract, we'll say, Mr. Perry, because that's at what point? How many, that takes a lot of...
Contracts, yeah, yeah.
You own that contract, right? 10?
The 10, it's after 10.
After 10?
It, it registers after 10.
Yeah. Or you've been suspended, then you're, long-term, then you're gonna get on the wait list.
Yeah.
How's that sound? Good compromise?
Devil's advocate here. Okay. All right. My child transfers, and they were gonna be assigned at Webb, and I want... and they were going to be assigned at Webb and I want them to go to South Granville, so, okay? They're making As, Bs, Cs, have a little trouble with one of their classes, but they pass everything. Do they have to reapply? Because she may fail Algebra II and have to take it in summer school, you know what I'm saying? Are you going to put that kid back out, or once they're in, are they in?
Once they're in, they're there for the year, absolutely.
And to be fair, they have to reapply every year anyways.
So.
Explain that process, Ms. Hunt, everyone's real clear about how that works.
Yes, so they have to apply every year so that they can retain their seat for the next year, so that makes sure that they, the principals will know how many people are registering in those grade levels for those, um, students. So each year you apply during the open enrollment window in January.
I'm just thinking about that child that maybe gets in, in the 9th and 10th grade, and then all of a sudden, they're in the 11th grade and they take a class and just can't quite get that class. Is that going to keep them out?
Only talking about for this year though.
For this year, okay.
So I mean, this, what I'm recommending is only for this year, for this process, this one time. So, I mean, you know, if after that, the, the capacity issues turn out to be a non, you know, a non-issue or whatever, then we can revert back to what has been historically done.
Just want to, you know, I really would, would love to see some consensus on this, I don't want to proceed if anybody's got any, you know, lingering concerns about this. I want, I want it to be, well, to be very clear, this will be, once we're done, I will put this in a presentable format, and this will be shared with our families, okay? This will be fully advertised so that everyone can see how this works. So. Did you have something, uh, Mr. Attorney?
I would just say, again, I have a little context on this, but, um, my understanding is this item is being presented for information and feedback, so.
Correct.
There's not necessarily going to be board action on it tonight, or there wasn't going to be any action contemplated, so, so, so one option could be, you know, to take the feedback received from board members and bring another proposal back. Of course, I don't understand your timelines and whether that's something that's feasible or not, but you could certainly do that, or it could be something that's delegated to you as the superintendent to take the feedback and come up with the final proposal, those are certainly options.
Well, the only other problem is that we have three new board members coming on at the next meeting, and so, we, who are not currently here. And so if it's not decided by the, the people that are here today, then we would kind of have to start all over.
Let me understand what we're saying here, if I've got a student who has a failing grade in math, that's currently going to South Granville, and now they're out of district, they are not going to be able to be in the lottery, or do they just get no points for it?
Yes, or, yes, I think that was kind of the consensus, Dr. Glendy.
Waitlisted.
They would be waitlisted and they would only get consideration if there was room.
Attorney, thank you for making those points, and I, you know, traditionally, this is an area that the superintendent and staff have just sort of managed and handled. So that's why it's not an action item, but of course, board, if that's something you would like, you want to vote on and you want to codify it, that's fine, I'm, I'm happy to do that. But I think there is a certain point where it gets difficult for y'all to micromanage, and it's easier. Again, that's why I'm just seeking input and, and kind of consensus here today.
I think as long as there's that opportunity for, you know, a special circumstance that you would feel comfortable going with, I mean, not just willy-nilly, but, you know, it'd have to be something very comfortable, you feel, feel needed to be done.
And if at any point we discover that, oh my goodness, there's not going to be any room for anyone, we'll have to come back to you and, and make a recommendation, and then maybe you will have to take action to close transfers for that school. Because that would require your, your action. Maybe, you know, when Dr. Hamm gets us the preliminary numbers and we say, whoa, it's going to be a thousand kids assigned to South Granville and only 700 to Webb, which I, which I don't anticipate, but I'm just saying, you know, hypothetically, we will, we will keep you apprised. All right. Anything else about student transfer process? Thank you, Ms. Hunt. So the next item, uh, here to, to talk about are the staff reassignment timeline. And I'm at a little bit of disadvantage because Ms. Kern was going to lead us through this, but, um, we, we of course have talked about this as a team. And you can see we've, we've got a bit of a timeline there. The driver for staff reassignment is students, student enrollment. So prior to the break, we will be sending out a staff interest survey. And actually, that should read 25, 26, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's just a staff interest survey for 25, 26. That's going to open right before the break, and so that, and that's something we do every year. Mr. Perry did that for years, when did you usually send that out though, Mr. Perry, like more like in the beginning of the spring?
Beginning of, uh, either January or February.
January, so we're going to back it up a little bit this year, um, and let people think about it, it'll open before the holidays, so they can think about it over the holidays too if they want. And then we'll close that, and there's, there's not a hard copy of this at your table, I'm sorry, um, this is only on board docs, so I'm just looking up at the screen. The, uh, that would open before the break. So I'm a teacher at one of these secondary school, one of these middle or, or high schools, well, actually, at any school, right, it'll, it'll, these, if.
That's everyone.
Everyone can say where they are and where they want to go, and that helps us sort of plan, we do that every year. But this year, we do it a little earlier, and it'll close about mid-January when they come back. And then we're thinking that week after Valentine's Day, we should pretty much internally, internally, we as a district should know where the kids are going to be, for the most part. We'll have some real solid projections about where, how many kids will be at every school for the 25, 26 school year. And that's when we begin, right after that, the end of February is when we begin that staff reassignment process. And again, Ms. Kern will probably pull together a committee, and we will use objective criteria to make decisions about where people go, using rubrics. And if you scroll down, Mr. Connor, I think this document has, yeah, we've separated these by categories, so depending on what type of employee you are, we will, um, use a separate rubric for each of these areas. So all classified staff who drive buses, uh, classified staff with CDLs, athletic coaches that are faculty members versus athletic coaches that are non-faculty, certified teachers, certified support staff, you know, so we have rubrics. For that certified support staff, there's a kind of a, I think two-point was referencing maybe two separate categories there. I would have to speak with Ms. Kern about that. And then assistant principals and principals would be superintendent placement with board approval. And we will be bypassing our regular interview process for this. Normally, we have a school-based team that interviews the staff, and then they send finalists to me and senior staff, we interview, and then we make recommendations to you. But in this instance, I believe we're going to need to just, we, we will not have that luxury, um, these folks will need to be appointed, basically. Just scroll down, Mr. Connor, is there anything else in that document? Is that the bottom of it? I believe that's it, yep. So, and again, I apologize, I know Ms. Kern had a lot more to share about this, but the rubrics that she's developed, she, are the same ones she used recently, that she shared with the HR, committee. When, you remember, uh, the beginning of this year, we had to move some folks, right, because, um, our projections were off. And in deciding that, she looked at a lot of things, like how, what's your, what's your licensure area? How have you performed as a, you know, how have your students performed? How, do you have any concerns with your evaluations in past? How long have you worked for the school district?
Are we going to, um, share those rubrics with the staff?
Absolutely, absolutely, 100%.
Because I want them to know.
Fully transparent. And I think Ms. Kern's plan also was to bring those rubrics to the HR committee to fine-tune before they're used. But we, again, we want to try to stay away from like subjective criteria, you know, like, oh, you, you know, so-and-so likes you more, whatever, no, 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 you know, that's not good.
Are we anticipating that we're going to need the same number of bus drivers, or less, or more?
Dr. Hamm, did you hear that question about bus drivers, and, um, maybe you just want to talk about it generally? Get your magic ball out.
I am anticipating the same number of bus routes, and actually, what we're going to do, once we get the reports to Dr. Winborn around placement based on address, we're actually going to go ahead and start looking at next year and trying to map out routes. So as we're making these employment decisions, we should have a decent idea, um, how many, how many bus routes will be needed at each school.
Dr. Winborn, with the enrollment being 850 and about 950 of those high schools, that still constitutes maybe a principal and two APs and three counselors?
Yes, thank you for raising that question, so, um, we have, as senior staff, we've actually talked around, talked, tossed around the idea of, right, currently at our, each high school, each of our three high schools, we have one principal and two APs. We've talked about for the first year, one principal and three APs, because it's going to be a difficult transition, there's a lot, and, and hopefully maybe blending some of the principals from these campuses that know these kids. Now that'll depend on how many folks we've got, and our budget, and if Ms. Hines can, we can, if we can, are even able to support this temporarily, or maybe we have a floating AP that goes to one school one day and one to the other. So they have two and a half APs or something like that. And particularly at the new Granville Central Middle School, right now, middle schools only have one principal and one AP. Maybe we have one principal and two APs at the new larger middle school, which they will, I'm sure, need. But again, you know, some of these things we have, we're going to have to be really careful about when it comes to a budget. Like, I'm wary to make any promises right now, but this is something we've talked about, and that we think, uh, just certainly in that transition year, you're going to need extra hands.
How soon do you all require staff members to tell you that you're retiring or transferring, what's that?
Normally, when that declaration of intent form goes out, that is the first opportunity for staff to start notifying you of their plans to retire. But of course, a staff member can let you know at the last day of school what their plans are, so, we do try to get a, well, the HR department does try to get a pulse check, um, earlier in the year as possible.
Yeah, because I mean, one thing that always, kind of, not really surprised me, but I think was difficult, is that when you're retiring, you don't have to give notice. You can just turn in your, you could go, Mr. Perry, did that happen to you when you were in HR?
It has, today's my last day. I can't stop them.
What'd you say?
They can say, today's my last day. Happy retirement.
So this, this timeline is kind of like after the student timeline. So the new board members will need to be brought up to speed on this, this will be talked about in more, much more detail in the committees. But again, the goal is going to be transparency, and thank you, Ms. Hayes, for that point, full disclosure of the rubrics and for which category of employees and how all that's going to work.
I hope that you guys will consider, like, sending this out in the Friday memo this week, I know that, talking to the staff. This was the, one of the biggest concerns that they had was what these, like, the progress is going to look like and with the timeline, how that's going to play out with them.
We would certainly will, and I, my thoughts were to try to get this initial information to families as soon as possible, some of these big milestones. Any other questions or concerns about the staff timeline?
And just, and also, just to be clear, um, so this will, you guys are going to move forward with certified and classified staff simultaneously, right?
Correct, correct.
Because that was the other concern that I heard from staff, was that some of our classified staff were worried that certified staff are going to get priority in the timeline, and so I just wanted to.
Absolutely.
Communicate that, that they'll be moving forward simultaneously.
Yes. And you know, and something that, that, and we've tried to, in all the communication we've had thus far, all of the schools are going to be impacted, all, all of the secondary schools will be impacted by this. So, you know, I think it's unfair to put the, the fear and the burden all on Granville Central staff. You know, there, there may be some situations where staff at JF Webb and South Granville might be moved to accommodate those that are maybe higher on the rubric. For example. So the last item is the facility, uh, transition, and I know that Mike Carroll spent some time working on this with Ms. Kern. And really, the bulk of the work will occur late spring and over the summer, it'll be a very busy summer. But there'll be a lot of planning that will occur. Um, of course, the big work will be just, you know, that, the facility at, at current Granville Central High School, converting it to a middle school, there's not a lot that will have to be done. You know, there's the driveway sign, the front door, the gym, logos, but if we keep the mascot the same, the Panthers, and we change middle, I mean, we change high school to middle school, there's not a whole lot really, thankfully, that would, would have to be done. So that keeps the cost way down, and the amount of work and time that it takes to do all that conversion also way down. Thankfully. I mean, that's seriously saving the district hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Ms. Hines, so I understand that, um, we give all of our, our middle schools and high schools, um, a certain amount for their athletic budgets every year. And, um, we've talked about this quite a bit, you and I, and what I'm hoping is that at least for this first year, what we'll do is take those and we'll, we'll give them a bump, because there will be less high schools and less middle schools, because when I think about it, you know, some of our high school teams will be bigger, and they will have more needs, and then especially with Granville Central Middle School, they're going to be starting all over from scratch. And, and while some of our middle schools do have a very active PTO that can carry some of that, I think it's unfair to, to burden, um, you know, those, those organizations with the entirety of, of funding those teams.
Initially, my, my initial thoughts are that, that third high school, those funds would, that would typically be directed, would just be split. Because the, at that, that level, at the school level, the funds really do follow the students. So we're not dropping the number of students, so those funds would simply follow.
Are we anticipating giving the new middle school a little bit extra? Are we anticipating giving the new middle school a little bit extra for the upcoming? Because they will be starting from scratch for a lot of those team uniforms. And I, I feel like that's going to have to be taken into consideration. I mean, and while some of the, the high school ones may be able to be recycled if they don't say high school on them, I'm trying to remember what all of them look like and I can't off the top of my head, but.
I'll, I'll make a note of that. It's a, it's a good point. You know, we think about the, the high schools a lot, but the middle school has to be considered as well. But of course, you know, that's taking the budgets of two middle schools and filtering it down to, to one. So, and that, so that'll help as well.
I, I'm very aware how much athletic uniforms cost. And it's astronomically more than what most people think they are.
You are absolutely right.
Way more than what most people think.
Yeah, the average cost of a unit.
In middle school, you've got some here and some here.
Oh, yeah, right, right.
Absolutely, I'll look.
Thank you. And we want them to make, we want to make sure that they have those available. I think it'll help with the whole school spirit and coming together as two schools merging into one, you know. I want to make sure that we're, we're typing that.
Funds available early on so they have time to order because you can't order them until you know the size of your uniforms.
How long did it take for the uniforms to get here? Last time we did this, a couple of years ago.
The banned uniforms were all over the place. That, that was several months. And in some instances, it was probably four to five. So there is some, but of course, that was banned.
Yeah, that's a little different.
But we can, we can look into it.
If you look on the second page, if you scroll down, actually, there's a category for athletic equipment moves. And these are notes that Coach Carroll, Mike Carroll, put in here with his athletic director hat on. Of course, there's golf carts, weight equipment. Holly Middle School and Butler Middle School, they can, they could sell their jerseys as fundraisers, you know, sort of classic historical keepsakes. And those could be added to the new Bramble Central Middle School budget, athletics budget. But apparently, I think I remember him saying this, is that most of, a lot of the jerseys just say Bramble Central on them. They don't say high school. So they can be repurposed. Now, to your point, we may have some smaller players that we need to think about and get some new sizes. But some of it can be repurposed. And then you can see all these categories. You know, Meg Strong, Director of Child Nutrition, she's thought about some of the cafeteria equipment moves that will need to occur. You know, we've got, we've got, there's going to be some furniture moving around, certainly. We've got, we will need to move some items to South Bramble and to Webb, where we have vacant classrooms or classrooms that aren't really set up fully or maybe have really old, broken equipment that needs to be repurposed. So we'll be looking at that. Because we'll be, we'll have stuff at Butler Middle and the current Holly that, I don't know, it might just need to go to the high schools if it's suitable size and it's, and it's nice. There's a, a bit of a shift that's going to have to occur with all those, all that furniture. And then, of course, technology is a huge lift here. Mr. Connor's thought about that already. I think it's kept him up at night a little. But, you know, the actual physical equipment in the rooms. A lot to do. And, you know, I may give that Mr. Graham guy a call to see if he wants to do some part-time work next spring and summer to help organize some of this stuff. We'll have to see.
He recognizes your number, he may not answer.
Yeah, we're going to need some extra help, for sure, so.
Well, he's such a pro already, so.
Yeah, he's been through this, so he knows how to, how to roll.
Invaluable input.
See if he's interested. We can coax him out of retirement to help out a little.
Let's take that some of that.
Yeah. But, you know, there's a lot of details in each of these categories that the directors of these programs are going to be working on and thinking about. And will already are working on and thinking about. And of course, there's, a lot of this is going to flow through Ms. Hines, you know. She's going to be a gatekeeper with, with these funds. And we're going to be trying to save money at every turn. Dr. Hamm, can I put you on the spot again? I, I know like once the, once you are able to give us this information about projections, talk to us about the end of this year and kind of the rollover to 2526 and how all that information typically occurs with transportation. And I'm, and I'm really thinking far ahead out to next year.
Sure, yeah. So, so like I said, we're going to start planning immediately for next year. Because this time of year, transportation requests are not very high. So we'll have an opportunity to go ahead and start sketching out before any transfer decisions are made, before any enrollments in Early College or Bramble Academy or whatever the case may be. So we're going to go ahead and start planning ahead of time, almost immediately, based on pure addresses and where you go. So as we roll along, we'll be able to get a better idea of how many bus routes we're going to have at each school, which should go, flow right into when we're making decisions about staffing. And then once all the final decisions are made and we have that data in our next year, we'll move kids where we need to for Early College, Bramble Academy, those types of things. And then we just continue to work nonstop all summer as new kids enroll or different requests come in. We do have everybody verify that they're at the right spot for next year and those types of things. So we will continue to make updates all summer. Usually about a week before the open house, we will send bus routes to the schools and say, this is what we are rolling with for the first week. Because we can't continue to update and get information out. So, and then immediately, right after school starts, we will start the process of getting transportation requests. I tell you, typically, the first three or four weeks, we get between 400 and 500 requests a week for different changes, despite our efforts to have everything verified. So during that time, we usually send out updates once a week for new bus route changes. This time of year, we do twice a week.
Did that answer what you were looking for?
For, for later?
Yes.
I think I mentioned to the, this to you earlier this year. I would really like for us to consider changing the way that we do open house. It is nearly impossible for families that have kids at multiple schools to be able to make.
Separate times for grade spans?
Right. I mean, and then, and then also, with us going down to two high schools, we're going to have so many more students and so many more problems. You know, people that want to change their schedule, you know, kids that need to change things up. And, you know, doing that the Thursday before school starts put, it puts an incredible burden on our staff at high school. Because then they're just scrambling to try to get things done. I think this year, we had kids that still had, still needed class changes a full week and two weeks into the school year. And so I feel like if we, if we try to change that up and maybe let high school go for open house like a full week in advance or something, you know, try to figure out how we can do that to make it, the transition easier, you know, for our families, especially our high school students, our juniors and seniors. They, they have those credits that they need and those classes that they want and then the ones that they don't want. And I would, I would love to see that, that changed up to try to make it easier for our families and our staff.
Mr. Perry, you and I had talked about too. Shelby, you, we had what's called Summer Bridge this past summer. And this was for the students that were going, transitioning up to the next grade span?
Yes.
But we were talking about doing something like that this summer, but for all the students going to a new campus. Share what, I mean, a little bit about that, maybe just sort of talk it out.
So one of our ideas from our discussion was to transport students to the, to their new school. So they have an opportunity to see and visualize what will be going on at the school. Now, we know that cer, everything will not be in place at certain points in the year. So they won't be able to see and meet maybe the entire new staff or the administration, but at least to get an opportunity to view the school, the campus, and understand the layout of the land in a sense.
And we also talked about, just like we did for when Crete Moore closed, when all of the students transferred to Mount Enge and Button's STEM, they had a special day just to meet all of the parents and all of the students. So we plan on doing that as well.
And that was over the summer, right, that we did that? Was that, was that before the school year ended?
It was right before the school year ended.
That's good.
So, you know, as much as possible, getting ahead of time to visualize and see their new campus and how to touch it, feel it.
Bramble Academy. Do you anticipate cutting a cutoff on enrollment with that? How many kids you would be able to adequately serve?
Well, I think we'll have to watch it carefully. We, we'll, especially with regard to, so with, with, with high school students, they don't spend much time here at the campus. They're, they're mostly virtual. They come in if they need help. So I don't think we would necessarily need to put a cap on high school. We would have to watch the numbers as they come in for elementary and middle. Because right now, there are not a lot of elementary students at Bramble Academy. And so it's hard to, it's a challenge to staff. So we would have to, we would have to watch that. But my answer is no. I'll say no. No to cap. Unless something crazy happens.
Dr. Winborn.
If we had 500 students applying, you know, that want to come here, we would have to start, we'd have to start counting classrooms in this building and make sure we could house them all. Yes, ma'am.
I had a parent asking about their sports environment. Their, their child attended school here and they were urged to play their sports. Are they allowed to go back to their base school they were assigned to play that sport?
Yes, ma'am. And it's the same as Early College.
Okay.
The problem comes in, though, when they don't want to play at their base school. They want to play at another school. And we don't allow that.
Good.
Any other questions, board members?
I'm sure some things will come up all along, but I feel confident the staff will be able to work it out.
Well, we will keep working hard on this. I thank you so much for your input. Again, our goal is to keep all of our stakeholders, our, our students and our parents and our staff members, all up, up to speed with what we're doing. And share, overshare, over-communicate and be as transparent as possible during this process.
And I've already had people ask me for the attendance zones. So can we make sure that we, we send those out like as soon as, I'm like, it's on board docs for everybody that, that's totally available to the public all the time. So, I mean, it's, it's there.
Yeah, so Dr. Hamm, maybe if we could get those, the new attendance zones up on the website.
Yeah, that's.
The high resolution ones.
That's the question I've gotten the most is, can you send me the attendance zone?
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on getting that up.
Thank you so much.
Is there anything else?
No, ma'am, unless there are any other questions from board members.
No questions or comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn our work session?
So move.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none. The motion carries. We are officially dismissed.